We have a call.
Right, next on the indication by Pastor Jason Williams of Valley Community Church, followed by Blessed Relities from Alderman.
That's right, Father, we are grateful to you, God, and first of all, we just honor you tonight. Thank you for all that you do and your blessing upon us, God. We live an incredible nation, God, and it's because of the principles that were founded upon your word, God. As we honor those things, God, we know your blessing will remain. God, we're thankful for that. Lord, today we pray, God, for our leaders, the leaders of this community, God, we just pray your blessing upon them, God, and all their families. God, pray that you would give them strength, courage, and wisdom to know how to lead us and direct us as a community. God, we thank you for the things that you are doing and leading us into. God, we pray that the wisdom would always be there, God, to help us to know the directions to take and the things to do. God, if those difficult decisions are made, God, may they be based upon things that come from your word, first and foremost. Now, Lord, just bless everything that goes on tonight. God, we thank you for all you're doing and all you're going to do, in Jesus' name.
Blessed Relities.
From the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, individual and liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
No changes there. Proclamation, so move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens step forward to the podium in the microphone and please give your name and address to address.
For the record, anyone wish to address the board to see you?
Seeing none, move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
And motion Alvin West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Move on to previous business. We have in the previous business, we have El Magway liquor license.
Everything is in good order still for that one, and we are looking for approval to issue the license.
So we just need a final, was it a motion and a vote this evening on that? Anyone have any questions regarding that before making a motion? Seeing none, all fairies to motion to approve the liquor license. Motion Alvin Headley. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Stratton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Uh, seeing none, new business presentations or public hearings, we move on to ordinances.
Mayor, I move we accept, uh, I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill twenty dash zero four.
I have motion Alvin Headley to bring forth Bill B twenty dash zero four for bringing it up. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Stratton. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, this probably looks a little familiar because you basically approved the same thing in December of two thousand nineteen. Uh, we did it as a resolution at that time, uh, because that was after having conversations with MODOT, they were fine with that. And then we learned this year that they were not fine with that. It needs to be in the form of ordinance, even though that goes against everything we generally do. But at any rate, we would like to get those grant funds to put towards the pedestrian bridge. So we are, uh, going forward with an ordinance, um, so it is on here for two reads, but this will be for the pedestrian bridge over Blue Branch Creek. So it's a little over a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in grant funding that, uh, we will get for that. But that's all I have.
All right, do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Mayor, this is a first reading of Bill number B twenty dash zero four, an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Grain Valley, Missouri, repealing Resolution Number R nineteen dash fifty-one, and authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a TAP funding agreement.
Is it first reading or second?
That was the first reading, so you would do a motion to accept the first reading and bring it forward for a second.
Mayor, I move we accept, I make, sorry. I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill twenty dash zero four.
It would be a motion to accept the first reading.
Accept the first reading. Did I miss something? Did we? Did we add another step? Oh, sorry.
As Joe just said a little bit later, I was just gonna make a motion to approve them all at once.
I thought I just did that, so, sorry.
So you, you did the motion to make the first reading, so this is a motion to accept first reading, and then you, I believe that the board does want to bring this forward for a second reading tonight, so you would also make a motion to bring it forward for second.
Got you. My, my fault, sorry. Long day.
So I motion Alvin Headley to approve Bill B twenty dash zero four for its first reading, bring it back by Collins for its second reading this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Bass. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Mayor, this is the second reading of Bill number B twenty dash zero four, an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Grain Valley, Missouri, repealing Resolution Number R nineteen dash fifty-one, and authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a TAP funding agreement.
Mayor, I move we accept second reading for Bill B dash twenty, or B twenty dash zero four, making ordinance twenty-four ninety-four.
I have motion Alvin Headley to approve Bill B twenty dash zero four for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four ninety-four. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Stratton. Any discussion? I was gonna do it, I was on top. This'll be a roll call. I'm not gonna look at it, that's kinda that way you know that, now I'm doing it. All right, Alvin Stratton, Alvin Totten.
Yes.
Alvin Bass.
Yes.
Alvin Headley.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Yes.
Alvin Cleaver.
Yes.
Mayor, that was six zero. The ordinance is approved.
Mayor, I move that we make first reading by title only for Bill B twenty dash zero five.
I have motion from Alvin Headley to bring forth B twenty dash zero five. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Cleaver. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Trozen to go over the, uh, the plat before you.
So if you recall, this property is approximately eleven point three seven acres in size. The, uh, property is located west of Buckner Tarsoni Road, south of northwest Woodbury Drive, and north of North Jefferson Street. Property is zoned, the transition overlay district. The request before you tonight is the approval of the final plat for Mercado Plaza. They're plating two lots and four tracks. The final plat is in conformance with city standards and the engineering civil plans. The Plan Commission approved the preliminary plat back in November twenty, twenty nineteen. The Planning Commission then approved the final plat recommendation for approval to the board at their meeting on February twelfth, twenty twenty. Final plat complies with the comprehensive plan and, and conforms to the previously approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval. And the owner's representative is in the audience if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
It will be for commercial development.
All of the fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Mayor, this is the.
Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B twenty dash zero five, an ordinance approving the final plat of Mercado Plaza.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for Bill twenty dash zero five, bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next session.
I have motion from Alvin Headley to approve Bill B twenty dash zero five for its first reading, bring it back by Collins for its second reading. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. All right, next up, resolutions.
Mayor, I move we accept the resolution twenty dash nineteen as read.
I have motion from Alvin Headley to approve Resolution R twenty dash nineteen. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, uh, these items were approved in the two thousand twenty, uh, budget. Uh, the biggest piece of it is a Ford F five fifty that will replace our, the GMC fifty-five hundred, um, that was well past its time on the, uh, on the vehicle equipment replacement program. Uh, that vehicle will come with the salt spreader and plow. Um, and then another item on there is the, uh, plow for our front end loader. Uh, if you remember during budget time, one of the things we talked about, if we have, uh, bigger snow events, is the, a little trouble with cul-de-sacs in kinda tight areas, and that would, that would allow, um, some help in those, those areas.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
Just, uh, for some clarity, the F five fifty is nowhere near the size of the three.
This is not the, no, so this would kinda be down from that. Um, it's the, the GMC that we have now, there's not really the replacement for that. Uh, so Ford has the most similar one.
Do we have anything additional? Seeing none, all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. Six zero.
Mayor, I move we accept Resolution twenty dash twenty.
I have motion from Alvin Headley to approve Resolution R twenty dash twenty. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, um, this is something that staff was asked to look into, and the idea behind it is kinda for this group to serve as liaisons between the police department and Grain Valley residents. Uh, so some of the things that, uh, they might be able to do, study, recommend, and review police programs, uh, designed to improve understanding and communication between the police and the community, um, and then enhance the delivery of those services within the city.
Yeah, I'm the one that, you know, kinda brought this forward, 'cause if you look at really the rest of our departments, they really all have some type of citizen board, you know, be it planning zoning or park board, or, you know, you know. I know Chief was just dying to have some, a board of his own. No. So, uh, the big thing I was, you know, I, I kinda see them as, you know, reviewing things from the police department, making recommendations to us, you know. I know one thing we hear a lot about is, you know, maybe the need for more officers. I would like this forward to be able to, you know, look at that and make recommendations to us on, you know, how they feel we should go about doing that, and, uh, you know, other ideas. So it's like something I wanted to do. I know Ken and Teresa and Chief worked hard on getting it together, and if you may have any questions, I'll have, we have some of the members here this evening that we're gonna put on, I'll have Jamie read the names, and there's some of them are out there, I'll have them wave as we, you know, who they are, so.
Okay, so the members that have been appointed are Kathy Dowd, um, Darren Mills, Wayne Geiger, um, Dan Mahirin, and Justin Tyson.
I don't know. Shay will be our liaison from the Board of Aldermen to it, so.
Can I ask a question?
Mm?
What, uh, interactions do these people have with the police department?
That's what you mean.
Well.
I mean, they haven't had any yet, 'cause we haven't had the board.
You mean they're not a pain in the butt like I am?
Well, I didn't, I, I wanted them to come in with an open mind and not have, you know.
No, but I mean, you gotta have where they, they take the time to talk and go around and see exactly what they're doing.
That's, yeah, they'll do.
Okay, I'll be watching them.
All right. Uh, anyone else have any questions? All right, seeing none, and all fairies say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
I'm gonna thank everyone who's, you know, volunteered and stepped up and do this, so it'd be a great help, so. Uh, that's it for resolutions. Uh, next up, city attorney's report.
Uh, Mayor, as the last couple times I've reported, obviously, the, uh, Missouri Legislature is in full swing, uh, at this point, so, uh, uh, most of the bills are always prefiled, and so now we're going through and, and they're going through the various committees, and, and as they pass through whatever house they started in, now they're starting to swap over to the others. Uh, the last meeting we were here was on the eve of the Missouri Municipal League's Legislative Conference, uh, and, uh, we attended that with, uh, three of our staff members. Uh, we were able to, uh, uh, meet with, uh, uh, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Ozenbaugh, and we actually met with, uh, one member of our staff or another met with two or three, I think it was different, uh, uh, representatives, uh, on behalf of Grain Valley, but, um, still hard at work with, uh, various pieces of the legislation and, and, uh, able to, uh, testify at these committee hearings as they come up, in case someone from the city can't make it and you'd like to have your voice heard. So just passing that along.
Thank you. All right, next up, city minister and staff report.
We actually do not have any reports tonight, other than the written report or printed report that, uh, is there from community development.
Mark's gonna get a bill started, all right. He's the only one that has a report. All right, next up then, Board of Aldmen reports in confidence. Alvin Stratton.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alvin Cotton. Alvin Bass. Alderman Headley.
I have, uh, something I wanna bring up. See if he can.
Oh, okay. Uh, Alvin West. He's passing to you, 'cause he's got something to bring up. Do you have anything for reports? Alvin Cleaver?
Yes.
All right, right back to you.
So I got a call from a new citizen up in Rosewood, and he had an issue with basically, uh, the information he got back relative to his fence. Not necessarily an issue of the information he got back, just it didn't make sense to him relative to our ordinances and what he's seen throughout the rest of the city, and the fact that probably over years and years, the, the ordinance wasn't looked at the same way or dictated the same way for, for people putting in fences, whether they're doing it themselves or, um, having, having someone do it. So his issue, if you go to the first long page there, um, there's a mark. And I asked Mark a lot of questions about this, he, he helped me out, um, so he made a little packet for all of us. Uh, the, the first long page there with the, the highlighted yellow is basically where the fence line or the build line is on this guy's house. And what he wants to do is run his fence out towards the road, but because of the way the house, or the build line of the house is twenty-five feet back from the property line, he can only run the fence where that yellow mark shows. Um, he can change, he can change that and run a picket or split rail fence out to the property line, but that takes away from the fact that he wanted a privacy fence. So there's, the, the next page, uh, after that is an ordinance or a, a, a view of what that house would look like if we followed, uh, similar ordinances to Blue Springs. And with the exception of where the, the front of the fence is, the fence would actually be to the back of the house there. Um, basically, that's what he's asking for. He wants to gain more yard, have a privacy fence, and not have two types of fences. So what I, what I'm asking tonight is if, if, uh, I can get your support to, you know, work with staff, direct staff to look into ordinances around the area, work with the fence builders, come up with the best solution for something like this. 'Cause right now, if we follow this to a T, there's gonna, I'm sure this won't be the first call we get like this, and we'll probably get a lot more specifically around people at corner, corner lots and that sort of thing. So, is everyone good with it? Or you got any questions, I guess?
Same one that I got called, but it's a different one?
Those are different samples, uh, those pictures marked, those, uh.
Are they located?
Yeah, these are different samples, uh, some things that are done wrong, uh, for fences that are already built.
Currently in, right? One done right.
One done right.
The top one is the one that was done right.
Is this the same, would this be the same issue we dealt with?
Well, it's the same, it's, it's the same issue.
Same type of issue, I mean, this would engage the problem, and I got the call on this, we're talking to the person about, over off the.
That was in Greeley Park.
That was in Greeley Park, and it's.
And there's several in Greeley Park that, 'cause the way the lots are, right, the fences are kind of a mess.
Well, no, possibly.
Okay.
The one that you got the call on is the pictures on the top.
Okay, that's okay.
They, they installed it according to what the ordinance says. So that gives you an example of, if they would follow the twenty-five foot build line, that's the way you would look at a corner. Um, then the other two are fences eight feet from the property line and one fence that's right on the property line.
Does it block visibility with it being a corner lot? Is that why it needs to be that farther?
In some cases, it could block the visibility. We would also, um, also add a sight distance triangle, so we would not only check it to the distance back from the property line, but we would also make sure that we wouldn't have to ask for sight distance triangle. And so that's the, that's the illustration on the, on the first, um, long sheet drawn, because there's currently in the code, there is a sight distance, um, stipulation, and this is basically how it reads. If it, if the intersection is controlled by a stop sign, which in this case it is, you go twenty-five, twenty feet back in the edge of the curb and about a little over a hundred forty feet down along the street, to make sure that if somebody's sitting there, their, their vision's not obstructed by a car approaching. That fence doesn't obstruct it. And it's on a four-foot, four-foot high fence, picket, that they could go to the property line. Um, the only other exception I would also bring up is the ordinance allows a developer on a, on a corner lot to platter the building line to fifteen feet. We would honor that fifteen-foot building line on a plattest lot. But we have a lot of, of developers who platter twenty-five-foot building line. So that's why we have to respect that building line setback. And like in this example, even if he could go out to the sight, the sight line, he would probably gain the yard back that he wanted. So, I mean, I think there's a, a balance there that we can still work with both, you know, the, the issue of the sight line and giving, you know, the residents, you know, more of their yard back relative to having a fence. And, and, I mean, don't get me wrong, he can still have a fence there that goes out to the sidewalk, but the problem is you want the privacy fence around the whole thing, so.
So these two on the bottom here, they clearly don't mean.
Correct.
So, somebody bought this house and there was no privacy fence, they want to build a privacy fence, is that something you need a permit for?
Yes.
So, more than likely, they built a fence without a permit.
It could be a lot of things. It could be that, it could mean, I mean, when I started here, I didn't think they required, I don't think fence were, fence permits were a thing. Um, so, I mean, there's lots of different, where somebody just goes, yeah, does it without.
I don't think it's been there since you started.
No, yeah, but there's like a lot of, I don't know, trying to go back and find some of them is.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting track.
And it could've been interpreted completely different three years ago than it's being interpreted now, so. So I told the guy, you know, chat with Mark, Mark and, uh, who, who else met with, or called him, it's, I guess, you and, you, you talked to the fence builder that he's working with, as well as the individual.
Yes, property owner as well as, uh, fence builder contacted us.
Okay. And, you know, I think, uh, and I'd just like to see if there's other options we can entertain here.
So the code allows a split rail and picket? Is that what?
To the property line, yes.
Four feet high.
Not a privacy.
Yeah, so like, there's certain fences that are allowed in the front yard, and on, you know, a corner lot, you have two front yards, so that's where it, it comes in.
Other cities have ordinances that kinda address this, Alderman?
Yes.
Similar.
Yeah, like, you know, certain is eight feet back from the property line on a corner lot, Oak Grove, I believe is similar to that as well.
So that, would that override the, the build line issue, if we change the ordinance for that?
Yeah, because you would have an exception in the code that would specifically talk about fences, and fences having that setback versus then the building line. And we could look at the definition of building line, too, and compare it to the other codes as well.
Anyone have an issue with Mark and then looking at that, to?
See what we can come up with?
Maybe you wanna take a look at it, see what you can do? Anything else, Alderman Headley?
That's it.
All right. Next up, Mayor's report?
Go back to Mark again.
Man, he's a busy man, I. So, uh, I just wanna give enough space, I know a lot of the kids, we had the three good side water main break there on the corner of Eagles Parkway and, and Main. I know there was kinda different circumstances there, if you wanted to give the, for kind of a what happened and what we're, what's the next step we're doing there?
Sure. Um, so, um, we had a, uh, water main break. Um, the, uh, utility company asked for locates, we located utilities, as well as the gas company located utilities there. We had a contractor representing a cable company hit a water main, but they hit a water main that was not supposed to have been there. The water main was supposed to have been abandoned whenever the improvements were done to Main Street and Eagles Parkway. Um, so we went ahead and repaired the break that night, 'cause it was going till, I think they were out there until two in the morning. But since then, we've dug the hole back up, we've, we've capped the line and then took out the line that should've been abandoned anyway, and then put a valve there. Uh, we've since filled the hole and then put, um, concrete floorable fill on it right now, and then we're getting bids from a contractor to go back and then, um, replace the curb and sidewalk. Um, so we hope to have the complete project back and rehabilitated within a couple weeks. But that was, that was unfortunately the situation.
They were supposed to remove the line, and they did Main Street, they didn't remove it, so they drilled right through it.
Right, all the as-built lon, all the as-built plans that we had from that project showed that the line wasn't there.
Can you go back to the contractor?
Beyond, it's beyond the bond now, right?
Yeah, like on the, well, on the MODOT side, they don't require the length of bond even that we do on projects. Um, but it's been well past a year at this point since it was done. Um, so I don't think the likelihood of getting anything out of it is gonna be very high, but.
It's gonna be worth a phone call to harass them.
Do you have any experience with that? Is, is there any chance to get anything back? It was not supposed to be there, but it was?
Always try, I mean, they might.
We could always try to send some sort of a demand letter or something like that and see if, you know, they might turn over their insurance or something like that, I mean.
Might as well try, I mean, you know, we got five to nine hours into it now, so.
I try.
Gas saving cost is, do you have to have a gas saving cost on it?
Sorry, I don't have the cost, yeah, full cost, because there's still ways through the, uh, the curb and, and sidewalk.
I mean, not gonna be cheap, though, 'cause we got, we got, we got, we got overtime to two in the morning.
Car labor and pipes and doing everything, you know, sounds like it's fairly costly.
Yeah, it was, it was a situation where, I believe they started working on it like four o'clock in the afternoon, thirty-four o'clock in the afternoon, and they were there till about two o'clock.
Last text message from our city engineer out there was around two, saying we're going home for the night, and they came back, I think, the next day, actually, and did more.
We could, we could definitely, uh, uh, put some of it together.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see, to see what it, it's, it's, you know, kinda pursuing or, you know, it sounded like it, it was worth a, a letting. know, it sounded like it is worth that, a lot of it.
How long is the pipe?
Well, it wasn't ours, it was the MODOT project.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's true.
But we can, only we can figure it out.
How long is the pipe that's still there?
The pipe that we abandoned, the pipe that we abandoned is probably about ten feet.
But is it, the pipe still runs, or is it? You capped it, but it probably, does it still run somewhere else?
Well, we were able to cap it at both.
Okay, we were, okay.
Yeah, it was, should have been removed and tapped at both, both of the uh areas, because there's another um round, I mean, there's another ability for the water to circulate, so if you close down part of the city, you still have water to the other parts of the city. I mean, it got so confusing that night, we were shutting down, you know, businesses and residents all along that strip of southwest Eagles Parkway and Seven Highway, where typically you can shut down, you know, two or three valves for most, so that water's going to a lot of the other areas fix and manage.
Uh, next up, uh, is that your session, I think we have a need under items.
Uh one, three, twelve, and thirteen.
One, three, twelve, and thirteen, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn an executive session. That motion, Alvin Headley, I have a second.
Second.
Alvin Cleaver, any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye. Alvin Totin.
Yes.
Alvin Bass.
Yes.
Alvin Headley.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Yes.
Alright, adjourn the executive session.